Start off in the executive session. You want to make that motion?
Make a motion to go into executive session for personnel under 1 DSA 313 A1.
Number of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote opposed. Thank you.
And is that to include?
To include.
Terry. Okay, coming out of the executive session, I'd like to make a motion that we hire Terry Perry as our new accountant.
Want to make a real name?
Teresa.
Jesper. Jesper. Make an official. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very great. When we know yesterday. See you tomorrow.
Meeting with the auditor?
No.
It's on the...
Where are we meeting?
Oh, we're still in the meeting, I'm sorry.
The auditor, he's going to come in on Zoom and he's not here. I told him 7:01, so he's pretty...
Well, he's on auditorium. You want to do amendments? Overweight?
I have no amendments.
Do we still need to do the pledge of allegiance?
We already did that.
Oh, I missed that, sorry. I didn't realize you missed that.
There was an executive session early on for to hire a new accountant.
Okay, my apologies.
Are you not, are you on the agenda or?
Who's talking?
No, me. We can do amendments to the agenda right now. Are you going to do five minutes of public comment?
Well, I don't care, tell me what to do.
Lorraine.
Not in a million years.
Lorraine has to be on the agenda on Friday. I let her know that five minutes for public comment is...
Okay.
Because the agenda had already been posted.
Okay, all right. We'll do that, and if you have to, you have to return for official...
Well, when does she call?
Because Mr. Contreras stated that Thursday is the date.
That's out of order. Are we, are we there yet?
No, he's not there.
Okay. We'll do approval of the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of October 29th as written.
Okay. Additions, deletions, corrections. All over the paper?
Aye.
Vote. Got it? 7:02, the detective said he was punctual. Ah, there he is!
All right, that was great. Good evening, Ron, can you hear us?
I can hear you fine, can you hear me?
I sure can.
Greetings from hot snowy Island Pond, Vermont.
Nice. Welcome to Fairhaven. So, the board is here and they're ready to hear the conversation.
Hey, everybody. Joe, Joe, what do they got in front of them? They got the financial statements management letter. Have they seen the financial statements management letter? Because I just wanted to hit like the highlights of it and make myself available for any questions and kind of tell them where we're at right now.
Let's go, let's go with the management letter. How you doing? How you doing, Mr. Smith? Been a while.
Good, good, you all. It's been a while, so I ought to tell you something right there, a little longer than the normal. You know how long it's been, so let's kind of start there, you guys. So, so I know Joe has a lot of concerns about the management letter, rightfully so, and I would probably say if somebody read that management letter, hey, Ron, what could you singularly, you know, like point out as far as the management letter goes? That management letter is going to tell you that you had a lot of accounting issues, you know, that, you know, where your books were, that they were in some tough shape, you all, you know, and that's probably the best way I can say it. And I would also say they were in tough shape with the accounting issues and lack of reconciliations with banks and things like that. Just because of some of the bookkeeping, you know, some of the bookkeeping on putting the numbers where they were supposed to go, it wasn't there. It just wasn't there, which led to some huge accounting struggles. And as I told Joe the other day, you know, literally, there was, there was a lot of work that we had to recreate so we could just put together the federal piece of this audit with all the money that came through for your renovations that you got going down there with rural development and what you gave us is not what we gave you back. There was a lot of adjustments that we made, you know, a lot of that, and a lot of it clearly was because of accounting and bookkeeping struggles at the town of Fairhaven. And then upon further review, you know, we, you know, when we got the information, the bank reconciliations weren't done, you know, so, so when we were finally able to get back to Fairhaven, we were, we were in triage at our company. We had waited four or five months, you know, I know that there was some effort that was being made on your side to do it, but sadly, when we got that information back, there was more accounting work, more, more bookkeeping, you know, services that need to be looked at and paid attention to. That's probably where I start this story with Fairhaven, you know, is, and I'm not going to, I'm not pointing any fingers because I think a lot of it was inherited, you know, by your, by your finance person, your accountant that left. You know, I think that those books were in some tough shape, and I think that they got tougher as the year goes on, and I think that, you know, that she inherited a tough set of books and, you know, and clearly there was just a lot of non-audit work that needed to get done, which took us almost, it seems like, forever to bring this thing across the finish line, you all. And I'd probably start the conversation there.
Keep talking. If anybody has any questions at this point.
We saw, we saw no issues of fraud, defalcation, or anything like that. We didn't see that. We saw bad, bad accounting and bookkeeping. That's what we saw, you guys, and that's really, that management letter says, you know, is there's bad accounting and bad bookkeeping. So, good news is, we got a good jump on this year, you know, and hopefully, you know, there's, you know, some conversation. I know I had a chance to meet with Joe on Friday of last week, you know, a possible heir to the accountant throne, you know, so certainly we look forward to working, you know, if that works out with you all as far as that position goes and getting somebody in to work with that, but we want, we've been in there, we've done a lot of work in '24, we want somebody to work with, and we really want to get a jump on this thing while we can, so we can try to stay close to January, you know, having the conversation with you guys as opposed to November, you know, that we're having it right now. And, and I think that will be a telltale sign of progress right there. We already see where some of the issues are with, you know, the banking reconciliations that I think are pretty good through June of '24. You know, there's some accounting things that we need to work out, you know, with Joe on transfers and things like that. Those are expected, you know, but when we came in last year, it really felt that bank reconciliation set you guys back a long time, long time.
How are we doing on misappropriations?
Say that again?
How are we doing on federal misappropriations?
Yeah, so, so a couple of things. I heard federal, I didn't hear after that, so somebody's going to lighten what I said after that.
Mr. Villawitz is saying that there's misappropriation of funds.
We're not seeing any misappropriation of funds, we're seeing, we're seeing some bad, some bad accounting with what you guys did, the story that you handed us and done, but we don't see any misappropriations of funds.
Thank you.
Is he licensed auditor in the state of Vermont?
I'm a licensed auditor in five states, Vermont and Maine included.
Just making sure.
Is this public comment? No, wait, wait.
No, this has been done for years. San Antonio High Federal Regulatory Board boards.
My question would be, what, one of the things we, we talked with, with the new accountant that we're, we hired just before we talked to you, by the way.
So, so Terry is in place now, Joe?
Yes, sir.
Starts tomorrow, I think.
Yeah, she starts tomorrow.
Oh, the blond, blue-eyed bimbo is gone?
Shut up! One more, one more lady like that, do it again. Do it again. Arrest me! Stop that. Arrest me!
Is the gentleman a board member?
No, no, no. Arrest me! He's out of order.
Arrested. Just relax.
Mr. Villawitz, quiet or I'll ask you to leave.
That's for sure, you guys.
I'll ask you to leave, ignore Villawitz. Don't do that again. People are people. Yeah, absolutely. Stop that.
First amendment, bud.
Yeah, necessary.
I'm sorry about that, Mr. Smith. My question was...
You're mature.
My, my question was, what do, in the whole letter, what do you think is first, Terry should be attacking first, and why don't I shut that part?
I think that there was a period of time when you lacked accounting, for lack of a better way, DNA, lacked, really kind of like bookkeeping DNA, and I think that the reason was, was the lack of governmental fund accounting and really the stress that these federal grants kind of put on you. I mean, it's just, somebody went in there really kind of without that knowledge and understanding of how fund accounting and governmental accounting work. That's what I think that we saw, you know, in 2023, you know, was really kind of the results of the lack of understanding and really some accounting DNA to handle fund accounting. That's what we saw, okay? Because what you gave back, we moved a lot of things around with you guys as we began to learn your story and find out what we had with federal funds and things like that. There are a lot of things that got moved around, and I think a lot of it was due to, you know, quite frankly, a lack of understanding of fund accounting, and I think that the next accountant is Joe and I had a chance, and I had a chance to talk with Terry on Friday. She clearly comes with some fund, fund accounting background, you know, so, you know, so she has an accounting background, and I think that those two areas certainly were on full display, you know, you know, which led to a lot of the delays, you know, of this last audit. I think that they were on full display, you all, and I'm really hoping in getting in there right now in November and working with that. We're having this conversation 60, 90 days, not one year from now, you all, so.
Questions, folks? Any other questions?
No.
Joe?
No, sir. We met with Ron on Friday, like he said, Terry showed up and we went through the list, and like she told the board, she says, this is just a matter of getting stuff done in time, like making sure the bank recs are done, making sure we're following our, you know, our monthly needs.
She was confident about setting on processes, which really sounded good to me. Overall, other than that, Mr. Lincoln...
How'd you enjoy the pledge?
Yeah, exactly. We're, I don't know, I just, you know, it's a tough letter and we've got a lot to work on.
There was really, you guys, and I think it's, and Jenny was a good, solid accountant, and I think that there's certainly been, you know, for lack of a better way to say it, you know, probably some regression in that area, and I think what, you know, what was inherited by the person that just left, there was a lot to fix, there was a lot to really kind of untangle there, and it really was just a, there was a lot of work, you know, that we had to do to work with you all, to kind of, like I say, give you what you gave us back in the way that it looks like here right now, you know, so that was, you know, that was the biggest challenge, you know, but I think, I really think, you know, that it's a, you know, that, that what a difference a year is going to make, getting somebody with a strong accounting background in there, with us working with that individual, you know, and really, you know, having the next couple of months to like put this all together, you know, so that we can have this conversation a lot tidier. And, and the other thing that's missed is, all the conversations during the year, you know, between Joe and our company here, on really where kind of some of the issues were kind of helping out there and all that, it's not like there wasn't effort that was being done, but your internal, for lack of a better word, accounting DNA just wasn't there, it was just, it was just, it was just a struggle. A lot of times when we gave you something back and said to do this, when we got it back, we had to say kind of, you got to do it again, you got to do it again, you know, so, you know, so I'm hoping that those struggles can be avoided.
Your thoughts, Joe?
So, I enjoyed working with Darcy, so we really did, and, you know, and I think that, you know, I understand she's not there now, we'll enjoy working with Terry, but, you know, clearly, you know, that there was a lot of things, but there were, there was a lot of things to be fixed as well, you know, that, that I feel that Darcy inherited, so.
Okay. And we've talked about that before, so, yeah.
That's true.
Financially, you guys landed your general fund plan almost exactly where you landed it from '23 to '22, and then as prior as, you know, you've got some reserve accounts. One thing that I would say, Joe, during this audit, you know, and, you know, was brought up by Ally, you know, who was working with me on Friday remotely, you know, is looking at some of your grant funds and some of your reserve funds for capital projects and grants, and there's been some inactivity, you guys, for the, for the past few years, probably looking at that and taking a look in the mirror and just saying, okay, how'd they get there? When did they get there? And is there still a use for them, or do we need to look at those and re-obligate some of these funds? And I, I think that that's something that an exercise that needs to come out of this audit for '24 as well.
Are there any ones that, we're in the middle of budget season now.
Your grant funds, I think, is one of the bigger ones, you all. So, you've got like a grant funds, you've got like a, like a grant review fund, there's a couple associated with grants, you know, that, you know, that got there, had a purpose, and I think it's probably time to look at their purpose, you know, right now, you all, so.
There are a few accounts that they just kind of sit there, they might have a hundred, they might have a thousand dollars, but over the years, they just kind of sit there and sit there and sit there, and I think that's what Ron's talking about, is do something with it, don't...
That's exactly what I'm talking about, Joe, and we're good with them sitting there, let's find out how they got there to sit and just kind of take a look at their intentions. And it could be as simple, you all, as going back to your next town meeting in March and saying, we've identified these funds, we think that they're better used elsewhere right now, and we'd like to re-obligate these funds and re-appropriate them. That's what I, that's what I'd really like to, why I'd like to work with Terry to stay out in front of that one, because there's some, there's some money there, you guys, for sure.
Okay. Anything else do you think we should have, we should be aware of, or?
No, I think that letter sums it all. It's a tough letter to read, but, you know, it's, it's, it's just the truth, you know, and, and we know, and we know, we know what we got to work on, and Joe and I talked about that with Terry on Friday, we know, we've got a plan, and we're glad that she has come on board for the town of Fairhaven. We look forward to working with her to execute the pledge.
Thank you. Any other questions before we let Mr. Smith off the phone? All right, sir. Thank you, and we...
We'll be talking to you guys a lot sooner. Reach out, Joe, reach out anytime, and like I say, we, and the good news is, we've already got our date in stone to come back. We're going to move this forward, you know, let's let Terry get in there and get her feet wet, and, you know, and we'll go from there, so.
Great.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Take care, everybody, be safe.
Bye-bye.
See you.
All right. Letter is there for the public, if anybody wants to read it. It's not pretty, as Mr. Smith was so able to say, but we'll go on from there. So, next is five minutes for public comment.
So, Mr. Lawrence is outlined, he wanted to make sure that he was able to speak.
Okay, we'll let him go first, Senator Lawrence.
I appreciate it, thank you. You guys hear me okay?
Yep, we can.
Perfect, perfect. So, why, I know we're talking, you guys are talking a lot about budget and audit, and I think the town really needs to look at and investigate some safety issues with the crosswalks over by the Cloud Nine and over by the laundromat. I know there's a lot more traffic coming across from the new parking area, and even in broad daylight, I mean, it's happened to me, I'm sure it's happened to other people, where you're kind of coming around that corner and you realize at the last minute that there's someone in the middle of that crosswalk, and I know there is some, I think some new technology where a pedestrian can punch or hit, hit a button, and the lights will flash and it will alert, you know, the driver that, you know, someone is coming across, he's in the crosswalk, what have you, and it kind of slows people down. I think that would be something that we really need to look at, investigate, see if there's money for that, just as a safety aspect.
There was a lot of money, but then it's gone.
The only thing I could say is...
Nobody asked you.
I don't care.
When, when your turn comes...
I don't care, I have a public right to free speech. He is a public comment.
Jonathan, you have to follow the Roberts rules of order. We're asking you to follow those rules. Mr. Lawrence has still got the floor.
You'll have your opportunity.
So, is it, could it be a cheaper way to join this with the, so they don't have the rubber house, so they do have the solar power, set up, and I don't know if the cost of setting something like that up or where that money would come from, but I think it would be really money well spent just as a safety issue for the town and for, you know, businesses, people coming and going.
We, we will investigate that, I mean, we have, there has been some talks about those kind of lights at times, so, we will investigate that. Whether or not we can get it into the budget this, this year is, is a question, but it's worth, worth asking. Any other comments?
It was coincidentally the same thing I was going to say, the, thank you for recognizing me. I was walking dogs last night, I get a dog at 4:30, saw a couple of people trying to get across the crosswalk and almost get hit by cars. I was at the Burlington Airport last week, they've got the flashy things, but they also have the cone that says state law stop, and if a pedestrian's in the crosswalk, I mean, the simple answer might be a cone, the expensive answer might be the flashing lights. We do, thank you.
Some of those, or...
Yeah, they keep getting run down, so they just...
We have, or when they, people would move on, when they had the ones that bolted out, they'd move or knock them over.
They do.
Wow. It's like a...
If I could just add to that, because I work downtown at night, and certainly right between where the laundromat crosswalk is to the crosswalk that's just before the school, that little section is really, really dark, and I either walk to work, or if I do drive my car, I park on the park side so that customers can park, and I've almost been hit twice just because the cars, when they get to the top of, right before the laundromat, they speed up until the crosswalk of the school, so that little section is really dangerous. And then when it curves out kind of near the dispensary, if someone parks their car, which a lot of people do because they're supporting businesses, it blocks the view, and so, like I said, I've almost been hit twice, and I think some crosswalk lights, cautionary lights in that section, the two places, would be pretty helpful for safety.
Right, but even the one out here on my way to work in the morning, people walking dogs, I don't see the reflective, I would almost hit people myself because they're...
Yeah, you can't see, I mean, I've caught a glimpse of reflective bell or whatever in my lights, but you can't see anybody half the time when I'm coming around the corner, it's too late.
Right, and it's really dangerous right there where the memorial is too, you know, because it's so dark. I've actually been passed twice on the right side where people don't really understand what's going on, because I don't think they can see very well.
Thank you.
Whereas the town of Fairhaven has been informed, as the gentleman has once stated, that the crosswalk by Cloud Nine, there are two parking, or parking spots that are illegal, according to the state of Vermont. Maybe the town of Fairhaven should take preemptive actions and block them off with barrels or something to prevent people from parking there. Preventive steps, because anything less than that would be negligent, because you would have been informed by the state that they are illegal.
We were informed by engineers that, that there was, there wasn't a need for those parking places. I don't think the state has come to us and told us they're illegal yet.
I believe the specific language that...
I think there's a big difference, and that's where that is at this point. In the, in the now-defunct, now-defunct side of, the business side of the plan that we had, that we don't have anymore because people didn't want it, because a majority of the minority, a minority of the majority, I don't know, didn't want it, so we don't have that anymore.
They present it to us.
So, we'll have to come up with some sort of piecemeal.
But I do know those, those two parking spots aren't going to be there anymore, so I think it would probably be best to just block them off in the long run, so that way you could absolve yourself from any further negligence.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You just said that the letter from the auditor is public knowledge. Would there be any opposition or any hesitancy for posting that letter, and as you said, it may not be pretty, on the Fairhaven Facebook or the Fairhaven Town page so that the public can see what's actually going on and any issues that are with the accounting? Would it be possible to, I mean, I know it is possible...
It's public knowledge, it's, it's a public document.
Right, but I understand that, but a lot of people, number one, the weather is changing, number two, a lot of people, due to physical infirmity, disabilities, et cetera, it would be helpful to post that online. I mean, not all happy news goes online, but sometimes bad news has to go online to enlighten the residents as to what's actually going on. We would appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. Lorraine?
Wow, hard act.
Hey, where are you on the spare?
Well, you know, Cindy and I are part of the IVC, and we've been doing this since 2020. We've asked the town for very, very little. We usually pay for it ourselves or somebody donated something to us. So, I'm giving you a list of the inventory that we have that is now in my garage, taking up one whole bay. And I want you, I've asked a number of times for someplace for storage. Obviously, this town has very little storage, so I either want you, well, no, I would like you to consider maybe getting a, a storage unit X at once, or if you don't want to do that, you can pay me for it, but it's got to come on my garage. And the only other storage place we were given was downstairs behind the furnace, go down the bulkhead, and we're all senior citizens, we can't do that. We can't do that. So, that's all I ask from you, to look at it, find a solution, that's it.
Kind of off topic, but I can see an idea is brought to me, so you, the stick figures in the park were very welcome.
Thank you.
Yes, and I just, suggestion was coming into Christmas, maybe getting people to do like snowflakes around the park. My, my wife brought that up to me last night, we, you know, my wife and I started the visual fairing for our holiday tour, we brought back for a third year, and I'm, I'll speak more on that later on Facebook, so, if you know people's credit, but she brought up, maybe we can get IVC to put it up there, maybe we can do snowflakes.
You're going to do the first one?
I can, I can try to work something up, but...
Let's, let's bring this...
We don't have much time.
Right, no, I know.
Let's see what we can do.
But, I mean...
It'd be really wonderful. So, you know we're going to do the gazebo?
Yeah, right.
And we've got a couple more things for that this year, too. Before, we put swags, is that what you call them, at the entrance to each one, but that became too hard, so we talked today about putting wreaths on all the light poles.
Yeah.
People are really good about donating, so if I had Scott put something on, we need wreaths, we only have about 12.
Right.
Only, only need about 16.
Yeah, we could get people to donate those.
Right, yeah, just, just a suggestion, this one came up.
No, but it's a good suggestion. We just have to figure out how to implement it.
Yeah.
More storage!
Yeah, right.
More things to store! I think there's some recognitions that need to be done. I think we need to recognize our state champions, football team, Slaters. Yay! I think that, oops, I think we need to recognize there were four or five inductees from our local dojo, four or five inductees to the National Black Belt Hall of Fame down in Pittsburgh over the weekend. Just some really good things are going on in town.
Yeah, there is. Thank you.
Very briefly, because I know I spoke before, but in response to Lorraine and the storage, Willie and she said that they're senior citizens that have issues with mobility. The elevator is for, you know, it was some ADA, et cetera. With the upstairs, there's supposedly room for the historical society, the fire department, and the community center. Would there be any room upstairs now that there's been all these grants, which the auditor spoke about, and the refurbishing of the community center? IVC is for things for the community, the stick figures, they do an awful lot, and I commend the IVC, so wouldn't they be entitled to some space in the community center if it's finished?
If there's room.
Is it finished?
At this point, we're still, we're still trying to figure out if there's enough room for what we have already.
But not only is there room, but is the upstairs ready for a public...
No, next question.
Okay, thank you.
Can we use...
Thank you, but we cannot carry those stick figures, even if... Thank you, but we cannot carry those stick figures, even in the elevator.
That, that's why we're trying to help you.
Yeah.
We're trying to help.
The elevator.
My, my question.
Lorraine, we will try, we will try to find space, and, and the storage unit isn't a horrible idea.
I've got a quick question.
You don't have to answer tonight.
No, we're not gonna have an answer.
We just want you to be aware.
We'll talk about that.
It's gonna be a three, four years ago. I've got one more question for five minutes.
You've already spoken in the five minutes, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Um, going to department head reports. Is the chief still here?
He is, yes, he is, there he is.
Put in your box, we had four arrests, for a total of seventy-four through the year, one for possession of stolen property, which actually stolen vehicle, it was stolen out of the Exit One RV, we recovered that vehicle, Mr. Standard's car. Um, one for one person, we had a mental health warrant on Main Street, and we had a violation of really serious order arrest. Um, we wrote thirty-two traffic tickets in the last two weeks, twenty-five written warnings, uh, two parking violations, we had no car crashes. Um, we did six sets of civilian prints in the last two weeks. Um, I gave you a brief rundown of what we did. Um, under notes, um, I just wanna note, like Halloween had a outstanding turnout, and I know it was warm. At one point, you couldn't get through some of the streets, you just sat and watched, it was, but we had no incidents related to Halloween during that. It was just a great event, it was probably the best one I've seen in a long time. Um, and I noticed people are starting to pop up with more stuff, almost like they're taking more pride in trying to bring, um, more people to town. Um, we also had the pleasure on the ninth, after the team won the championship, we threw together a last minute hometown pride, um, from Exit Five with Castleton, um, fired police units, and we went down around, down the south side and up through, and it was pretty wild to see the kids, or a couple of pictures, they were hanging out on the bus. It was very, I mean, I know I've got to do it forty thousand times, which I thought that was pretty impressive. Um, and I also wanted to just acknowledge, I know that Sean had, well, I talked about Sean's retirement, but he officially retired from the department the first of November. He stayed through, um, to provide a firearms training for this year, his firearm certification expired on the thirty-first of October, so officially retired November first, um, after twenty-seven years, um, of service.
Thank you, Hewitt.
So I just wanted to acknowledge him again, I know we talked prior, um, so the last two weeks, we had a hundred and twenty-six calls for service, and we're at thirty-two ninety-six for the year, at this point. And the revenue report will be next report, started getting the traffic money report, that kind of stuff back now.
Are you standing for budget?
Yes.
Anybody have questions?
Was it, is it the car that was, he and Standard's Camaro?
Yes, we did recover that. It was actually in Bennington in a storage facility, the owner, not the owner, the owner of this, they didn't, whoever had it, the person we arrested, which hasn't been public, case hasn't solved, there'll probably be a couple more arrests.
Right.
Um, that's why his name hasn't been public yet, but the car was located in Bennington in a storage facility, the owner didn't pay the bill. The owners cut the lock off, they went and found the car, reported it to Bennington BD, they said, yeah, that car's stolen, we'll be over to get it. The owner went back to lock it, in the meantime, whoever found it, whoever had the car, cut it, we had pictures of it leaving on a flatbed. Um, and that was in August, we happened to recover it in, um, in Rutland City, uh, well, twenty-eight. So. It's too bad that he even had passed prior.
Right.
But we do have the car back, so.
Pleasure, appreciate it.
Good.
Thank you, sure. With Tuck again.
Thank you.
Okay, real quick, um, the lead line inventory finished up, uh, last week, and letters did go out to those residents who didn't respond to, to the request for, um, two hundred, two hundred and change. Um, so if anybody's out there and they did get a letter that said, hey, there's a warning about, you know, lead in your water, because you didn't respond to the lead line inventory request, um, get that letter, give me a call, so that way we can take you off the list, but that's why you, uh, that's why you got that letter. Talked about the audit. Um, the grant for Skyline was submitted, the second grant, that's another sixty thousand to do that study. Um, that's in the queue. Uh, MERC came through, so I got a, uh, an email today about the MERC grant. The town received three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars for, uh, heating and air conditioning, as well as some additional ADA improvements, and, uh, some money to seal the envelope of the building. Um, I'm gonna submit, so Lyle and Cooper came in last meeting, I'm gonna submit a priority project for housing and for Skyline, as he had, um, recommended. At DPW, they've been working on weatherizing, did they take, did you guys notice that the font was out yet?
No, it's not.
Didn't look out, so they're, they're winterizing things right now, they've worked on the restroom trailer, they were at the airport and at the cemeteries, taking care of the water lines. That's what they're up to now. To... You've been up to the airport, you see that the guys moved some of those grindings on the Monka Road to improve that road. Expecting the solar project to go in. Uh, town renovation, we talked about the MERC, we're on the list to get the SOFAT engine in twenty twenty-five, I don't know if I told you guys that or not, but we finally got on somebody's list. Cameras go in the week of eleven eighth, next week, so the security cameras go in next week, in town hall, the park, and the, uh, later, yeah. And just as a heads up, that's all the updates I had, but just as a heads up, we're supposed to have a meeting on Christmas Eve. I'm assuming we don't wanna have a meeting on Christmas Eve?
Nope.
Okay, so, so I've scheduled the budget, or the budget discussions around that, but yeah, so I'm, I don't have any, I won't schedule a meeting for the twenty-fourth. And that's what I got for you tonight.
I just highlighted it. Try it again.
Try it again.
Gotta get in there to get it done. Questions for, um?
Go ahead, you.
Keep it so long, John. Okay, um, no old business. Appointment to the Rutland Emergency Management Committee.
Yes, this is our annual appointment of Chief Humphries and Chief Heller to the emergency, Rutland Emergency Management. Uh, we have the paperwork filled out, we just need, um, approval of the board and the chairperson to sign the document.
Make that motion.
Do you need a motion?
I do have a motion.
I'll make a motion that we appoint the police chief and our fire chief to our emergency management.
Second, second. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
All those opposed? Trash hauling contract.
Yes, so this is the, so we have a three-year contract with Casella, that, that, that ends in June twenty twenty-five. Um, I was wondering if the board wanted to extend this contract for the additional two years. I did reach out to Casella and ask him for some numbers, they haven't got back to me yet. But right now, they've, they've done an excellent, excellent job, no complaints. I don't know if you wanted to wait till we got the numbers back, or if you wanted to just move on with life and prove it.
There's not a lot of other outfits out there that can handle us. Um, however, we should put it out, at least, in some, some way, I would think. Some sort of, and the, the contract is up, and when did you say?
Uh, twenty twenty-five, but there's, there's a two-year extension if the board so chooses to, to do that, to make it a five-year contract.
What's your pleasure, folks?
There's not many outfits, I mean, we got them and.
I'd like to, I'd like to see some numbers on, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, really.
It's like handing out a blank check, you're right, I, I just. I, I, I'd feel more comfortable if they're saying it was, it was going to be the same, so you'd have an idea.
If we can guarantee it to be the same, then. I suspect, I suspect there'll be an increase, but there, but they have been doing an outstanding job, much as I would. Thought I never would have said that, in years past. But they have.
But if they'd like to, if they'd like to, uh, charge us less for the contract, I wouldn't have a bit of a problem with it. Price of gas is going down, inflation's going in the right direction, just assuming everything has to increase is, I'd be more in line.
Sure. All right, so, I'll do that, here about the, the audit contract. Yep, it's that time, it's that time of year for everything, so the audit contract, or audit servicing, services contract was up. This is the final audit that Ron, Ron's contract was gonna cover. Uh, we did release this, we sent the RFP to some auditing houses, as well as posted it online on the, after, it's the website that Vermont, the state of Vermont uses for their, for all of their bids, uh, and we only got one, one response, and it was RHR Smith, our current contractor. Uh, the contract, it is up a little bit, I think it was at eighteen K last year, um, it's at nineteen five, for next year's audit, nineteen five the year after, and then twenty-one thousand for the twenty twenty-seven audit, so it's.
Not terrible.
Nothing, yeah.
That's not the same, other spikes. Make a motion to approve the auditing contract with RHR Smith and company.
Second?
All second.
Comments, questions? Makes sense that, in one way, stay with the guy.
And it includes the single audit.
The single audit is, let me look.
Or do we need to add two thousand, that's my only question.
Single audit is five thousand dollars, we may or may not need a single audit, but I did, I did put for, in the budget, I did budget for one single audit for this year.
Okay. Which is different than this, 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 um, motion, but it'll be in our budget.
Cause the threshold's still seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, we've, we've used a lot of those federal, a lot of those federal funds the last couple of years, and we're not getting anything, we're not really bringing in a ton of money right now from feds anyway, so.
Okay.
I just wanted to make a comment, the gentleman that was speaking, I, I was impressed with that.
The bulldog?
The, the gentleman.
The bulldog?
Yeah.
Is that what he's called, the bulldog?
That's what I call him.
I, I, I was very impressed with, um, the comments he was making, and, and just.
He was totally impressive.
It, it this way has to be.
Yep.
And I just.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you. We're on for another three here, but the, the bulldog.
You know, he's not just, he doesn't just come in and find me here, if we find something like Theresa was saying, he actually helps us through the process. So he's, he's really, he's knowledgeable.
Right, I liked the part that she said, like, don't be afraid to ask for help, cause if you don't know, you don't know.
That's what they're rather, they're rather hit if you say that than you'd be ask some kind of answer.
Yeah, and I think we, we hit on our personal, I can do that, that's great. Purchase option for Skyline, inform us.
Yep, so this is the, so this, this goes back to that grant that we just talked about, or that I just mentioned for the Skyline study. Um, now this is totally, I, I wanna be a hundred percent clear, the town does not intend to buy the Skyline building, nor lease the Skyline building. This agreement just allows the town to take that grant money and then send a, um, send a contractor to do the study, if that's, if that's clear enough. Um, we did send this, this is drafted by our lawyers, we sent this to, um, uh, the owner of the Skyline building, we haven't heard back from him yet, so. There's no, there's no action.
But essentially, this is just, if I understand it correctly, it's a pass-through grant that we have done a number of times for different things, the marble house, um, apple tree, where the Fair, Fairhaven is the political entity that, that is written on the grant, but it's gonna go to, to, to other people or to, to other organizations.
This particular grant, we, um, we have a contractor that's gonna go in and do the study, and then provide that study to, to the town as well as to, to the owner.
Yep, and so they will have that, we will have that, the two people that are trying to develop Skyline into another affordable housing unit like it was, um, will have that to, to show to people who might be interested, that's what it's all about. So they'll have all the particular, this, this, this collector good, is, is the compressors good, you know, all, nuts and bolts. But that's where we're at, so we gotta just hear from the owners. Okay. All right. Well, so much for all the fun stuff.
Joe, you have a copy of the budget you're gonna go over to them?
I don't know. I've been using one of my old ones before.
And they have the same numbers?
Won't have the same numbers for stuff we've already talked about, we'll have the same numbers for what we've.
Talked about tonight.
And I, I'll do some.
I appreciate it, thank you.
That's, those last meetings, man. So, let's. So select board, so there is going to be a huge increase in pay.
Yours.
Yep. Looking good, zero percent. Same process, folks, we'll just go down, if anything bothers you, let us know, just for, for transparency. There is no increase, but the select board pay. Okay. Um, anything on the select board, we're down thirteen percent.
It's a wonderful thing. I'd like to come back to the economic development portion, perhaps after the next economic development committee meeting. I think that's, one thing we have to understand is how we're going to spend money, and I don't know what, what initiatives for. I think those conversations just haven't yet happened this year.
To that point, the, the going in for zero versus five thousand, I can understand, because if it shows the five thousand, that we, the actual was only one thousand seventy-five, and officially you're twenty-four, but there's quite a bit of things that are being worked on, and if you're not funding, I don't know how you do anything with zero funding. So I, I, I agree, I just, um.
Trying to keep it, trying to keep it low. There are some times you have to spend money to make money, that's what I'm saying.
I don't think we should cut it down totally.
That the, the, we, we're working on, if we're able, like, at one time, that five thousand came with three thousand to work towards website maintenance and update. Well, it's still gotta be done, our website is getting worse and worse, uh, so we need to, uh, at least three thousand for the website updating. The other two grand was the IBC, who you heard Lorraine talk earlier about, uh, things they do out of their own pocket and everything. Well, we've been telling them all along that, uh, don't, don't exceed two thousand dollars, or one, our, we have a bulletin board that we're working out of two thousand dollars, now we can put zero here, we're still gonna get, we still get a bulletin board, still gotta pay two thousand dollars, and, and, and there's zero system.
So you have, do you have?
So that's the reason the five thousand was there, so I, I mean, just to.
Do you have a number, I mean?
Five thousand, that same five thousand that was there, was, was actually, I, I, rather than coming back, I.
Yeah.
I.
Okay, let's put it there until further notice.
I mean, we might come back after in order to get where we are and say, life's tough, and, and there's some things we're not gonna do. Not gonna update the website, and we're not gonna do the communication bulletin board, uh, next year, that's what it would come down to. So I, I like to see the five thousand.
I, the, the, the website update seems really important, I'm just not sure if that's the right place for it.
Right, I, I know.
I mean, it, it, it affects more than just development of, it affects people.
It affects the whole town, really.
Yeah, so we gotta find a place for, and we gotta find a place for that number.
So there is money in, um, the municipal building under tech, tech support, something like that. Yeah, we have an annual contract that, she just maintains the site to keep it going.
Okay, well, let's get to that, and, and maybe that's the way we adjust this line in. Okay, well, let's get to that and, and maybe that's the way we adjust this line anyways. At this point, we'll put the five in, you know, as a placeholder or something else. We're good with that? Um, town manager? Any questions there? Do some meetings, that's enough?
See, I see you're getting the same, I see you're getting the same increase the board is.
Yeah. Big money time.
Zero.
Okay. I'm moving on. Emergency management. There is page five, page five. Me, that, I, if I'm not mistaken, most, most of that is taken up by the testing they do on the, on the, uh, generator we have at the grade school. One hundred percent, yeah, that's the generator maintenance and then the fuel that has to go into it. Yep. Um. Is there anything, and that, that's probably something to ask Jim. But I mean, is there, is there any technicalities we need to get through because the school is not ours anymore? I probably asked this last year as well, but I would, I would very much like not to find out that, that we're doing something wrong when, when, you know, the cars are floating by. I will, uh, I'll ask you. Yeah. Cause, uh, cause it's not our school, we just can't walk into it, I don't know, so, well, we're, we're, we're paying for this maintenance, it's not our school. Well, it's our, it's our.
It's our emergency shelter.
It's our emergency shelter.
I'm with you though, we should make sure it's ours to use.
I'm, I'm, I don't even know, we have keys to the place, to be honest with you. So. I, I don't know, I mean, it doesn't make sense that we don't, but that's, that's emergency.
I have a past school, I have a past, uh.
Okay.
All, all the schools in the district.
Well, don't go anyplace, ever.
You can't be tired. Sorry.
Let's stay here. Uh, okay, so, having said that, we will move on with some answers coming from later. Police department. Questions, comments? My question, my first question, are you fully set?
Yeah. So I'm hoping you'll see like the part-time number and the overtime go down.
Yep.
In this year.
I hope too. Have a nice quiet year. Why did I say that?
I didn't hear.
Leave please.
Most of the numbers haven't really changed much, um, other than your contract raises, I think most everything's close. Again, I'm hoping the, the gas, I think we opted a little bit not knowing where it was gonna go and who knows now, it looks like it's coming down, but we'll see how long that goes down. And hopeful.
That's rose up a little bit, above the, the three percent.
There will be a change in that position coming very soon, so the pay will actually be less. That's not official yet, but.
Okay.
Would be changing officers.
Let us know.
Ending retirement.
Let us know. If we can get it into this budget, that would be nice. Anybody got anything, any questions there?
Actually, probably could.
When you, when you know, we can, we can.
Yeah, it'll be before you finalize, we should be able to do something there.
Police training? Um, police vehicles.
Maintenance repairs were very high this year.
Yep.
How was our maintenance rate, how was our control rate?
Pretty good, other than the one car, the last car we bought, just had a reoccurring issue with the transfer case.
Is it the one we got from Castleton?
No, no, we had no problems with that.
Okay.
Um, the last, the hybrid we bought has had an ongoing issue with the transfer case, it'll be all-wheel drive and then rear-wheel drive. We took it over there, we threw a couple thousand dollars, that's what they said was sensors, it worked till we got back here. It's now back there again, they're telling me now that it's two thousand dollars, but a transfer case in it. And it's not very nice to them, they said you're throwing parts at it, is, what's the problem? So hopefully I'll have a better handle on that this week. But outside of that, most of them, I mean, there are, some of them are getting older, but we have not had a lot of issues, that's been, the newest car we have is the problem right now. But in theory, I guess, I guess they'll look at it this way, we paid twenty-five for that car and Castleton bought a new car at like fifty. So, in, in theory, we didn't outweigh a fifty thousand for a new car, we outweighed twenty-five and we tried to put some money in, so we're still, I think we're still ahead of the game. So far it's good.
Any questions, comments there? If not. Where's the fire department? Probably, they're, probably.
We just sent them a text saying we're a little bit ahead.
Yeah, I was just thinking, what, what time we're just supposed to be there. Yeah, we are, eh? We're good today. We do, what else we got on that?
Animal.
Animal control. Which is kinda.
Air part, machine?
Any, um, comments on air, animal control here?
No, I'm just having trouble staffing that, or we're staffed at the moment, I don't know how long it's gonna be, that seems to be one. Ultimately, it'd be nice to find somebody retired, that's available, and it's been kinda difficult. Not a high-paying job and it's not a lot of hours, so it's hard to get. Do that job. Somebody to focus on.
It ain't me, I can tell you that. Um, so we're not doing the rabies program, is that the story?
Yes, yeah.
I guess we're not.
Why? Is that a good thing not to do that, though?
No, it is not a good thing.
They all, they all alike, we all think that.
I don't think we have any choice, I think this comes from the town clerk. That's the problem. Don't, no, 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 this, no.
I thought, I thought this is fire.
Yeah.
That the person who actually does the shots isn't doing them anymore, it was more.
Yeah, I thought, I thought the town clerk didn't wanna do it anymore. No, no, it was.
My mistake, I take that back.
Oh yeah, I didn't wanna speak out of turn, but I think that's, that's exactly what it was, we just don't have somebody to actually do that anymore.
Right, we have a person who did it for us, actually physicals.
Rutland Vet clinics don't wanna do it anymore. I guess it was the young lady up here in area, but at the, at the coast, yeah. Well, can we, can we chase that a little bit maybe and ask, ask her? Rutland Vet usually.
Hospital, I was new folks, I was new folks.
The new folks, yeah, they're, they're nice people.
And if, so, for, what I hear you saying is a placeholder, do we put one thousand seven fifty, we don't know what the, the amount would be, but just something. So we have a placeholder there?
I think we should.
I think as we, I actually thought the town clerk.
I thought.
Did a pretty good job of reaching out and getting more dogs license and after this year, the shots, and it ties in with the rabies shot.
Yeah.
So I'd like to have us keep working.
Oh yeah, I would love, I thought that, and I apologize for curiously, cause I thought it was, I would, our. And, yeah. Okay, good, that's good to know. Yeah, we will have to find some staffing though.
It usually is for people to come help.
Yeah.
The D O.
Well, the clerk has to do the town, the dog licenses, so, you know, so that. Let's make sure that she's still on board for that, if we can find somebody. Okay? You got any, any? Back from, well, let's go through this and there's no need to wait, we're not a roll. So let's go to firefighting and if something shows, if not, we'll move on. Start with firefighting department, I think they have a salary, does that reflect, they've got an increase in their, in their, um, staff? They, they do, they have, I talked, in fact, I talked to Don Proctor today and they have a bunch of new, um, young staff that came on board. Um, it also is, uh, three percent to bring those folks back up to minimum wage because the state keeps bumping minimum wage up. Yep. Questions to speak? Asking, insurance is insured.
It looked like the medical expense, um, page seven, the seventy-nine point zero zero, where it took a. We were, we were talking three hundred, two hundred and then three thousand five twenty, it just seemed to take a pretty big jump. Even, even for more. Huh?
I wonder if that's like an E D for the firehouse.
Page seven.
Uh, it's forty-five ten seventy-nine. Well, it's top of, uh, the top line on the.
Yeah, top line.
Yep, so I, I do have, I do have Jim's notes if there's questions, and this is, um, twenty physicals and six fit tests, so twenty physicals at twenty dollars a piece. I'm sorry, twenty physicals at a hundred and seventy a piece and then six fit tests at twenty dollars each, and that's where that, that number came from.
Okay, so that doesn't happen every year, it happens once every, I'm just looking at, the actuals were, it was so much higher, I was just curious what, what the jump was, and not that it was.
Well, that's actually good news.
Yeah, that's good, means we have more people.
More people on, that's, that's fantastic, yeah. And the same with the insurance you wrote, the, um, the firefighter insurance is bumped up to twenty-eight hundred, is now twenty-eight hundred and then V L C T is at four hundred dollars. V L C T is where you saw the bump.
Good.
Fire department training. Nothing there that really do some meetings, well, that's, you know, five hundred sixty bucks, it's not the end of the world. Um. Maintenance. Uh, fire, fire department communications. That's a bit.
Large.
Yeah, under communications, they had an increase in their, in their phone and data, so they have three iPads, one of them was just defunct, they got that replaced, which brought another line back online. So that's what you're seeing, that's what that increases, is just bringing their iPads back, back up. They're using that more for their equip, uh, their chart equipment, so they can, they can track the maintenance of it.
So that might be a one-time hit and then it slides back to the thousand fifteen hundred?
Uh, I would expect, my, we've seen an increase on our phone lines too, uh, phone and electricity, I would expect that to stay.
It's gonna stay.
I would say, is probably if I had to guess. One, if they got three iPads, they'd probably replace them one year or something like that.
Okay.
Wouldn't be surprised, I hope they do. Any other questions, folks?
Um, communications.
That was on the list. Fire department equipment. Turning the page.
What's the status of our, our, our no truck, is that?
Been ordered, they've been worked on, yeah, being built.
Yeah. They, I know Jim, he got the, he got the specs in in time to beat the, the request, uh, beat the cutoff for that extra emissions for the engine, so he saved, what he said, eighty thousand dollars on, on new emissions. Uh, they've been going back and forth, and he'll know more than I do, obviously, but they've been going back and forth with the, um, builder to kinda tweak it to get it the way they want it. And that's as far as I know so far, that's. That's all I know about that one.
Under the equipment, uh, under forty-five eighty fifty-six point two zero, the air pack maintenance. Jumped to eight thousand. Do we just have a lot of air packs that were, that came due at once, that, that was a pretty good?
I thought we were doing a pretty good job of doing a few every year, but we may have.
I think there was a wicked increase on that, also, I remember, I heard something about that.
That's, I, so I have the notes, so Jim was, I guess, kind of part of the topic, but as an aside. Um, Jim has been trying for years to get a grant for this because it is so expensive and it's so in demand that we just haven't won yet, um, and I think he just couldn't leave anymore. Um, so the compressor service is seven hundred bucks, there's a big compressor out, you know, out back that they have to maintain. Uh, their annual test is seventy-five dollars each for thirteen, thirteen of the setups, so that turns into cash. They're replacing six cylinders at nine hundred bucks each, so that's your big, that's your big bump. I don't know how often we'll have to replace that.
So that, that'll slide back closer.
I don't, I don't know if they have to replace more, but they're definitely saying they're gonna replace six this year.
Right.
I would bet it's gonna stay.
Any grants?
I don't know if it'll be that high, but it's, it's, uh. And that's.
Okay.
The, the whole air pack situations are expensive, cause you get, you can maintain it for so long and then they're obsolete no matter what. You know, so.
No, I'm just curious why, why it took more, why it took the jump.
Yep.
The other one on there, it seemed to be a big jump on forty-five eighty dash eighty-three machinery equipment. Uh, let's see here, it wasn't really a huge jump when it went from eight to nine thousand, but there was a, the actual fiscal year twenty-four was seventeen thousand. And it, and then eight thousand, then I'm looking at, uh, the actual twenty-three was five ninety forty-six, it just looked like it was all over and I'm saying, what's the, the machinery and equipment? And I think the, the answer to that was getting, uh, completely outfitted up, that all the new people was that?
Yep, so we had bought some gear in the past, this year, um, we gotta, we do have a lot of new staff on board, um, going through training, but these, we got three helmets, um, five pairs of boots, you're gonna have the special boots. Let's see, a hundred foot of hose, which we did have our hose tested last year and they found some deficiencies, so we're replacing some hose bit by bit. And then whatever a four-way hydro valve is, I don't know what that is, but, um, that's three thousand bucks. Run four. Four wells. So that's better.
I mean, it's a good problem to have, but we have, we've got more deep on the fire department, more equipment's needed for them, but we have better coverage.
Busy the last week, dude.
So they've.
Structured fire down only last week. Went all that they responded to.
Yeah. Okay, so we're, we're good, it's just duly noted, this, the former. Former selection chairman used to say. Duly noted. Um, forest fire warden is the same. That's all we were planning to do tonight, right? We did animal control. Oh, it's Chief, Chief, are you still out there?
Yeah.
One question. Um, dispatch, you heard any rumors?
Nope, I went to a meeting on it and then there's another meeting coming up, and one of the things on the agenda is how to create a dispatch center like New Hampshire. So I don't know if that's the direction we're going, but they had a bunch of town hall meetings and I think they got a lot of pushback from the locals. But I haven't heard any more than that, I do, if I can find the email when it is, I'll email you, um, I hope it didn't go viral, if somebody wanted to attend that, at least if I can get it.
Yeah, that's, that's probably something that should be represented anyways.
While we're speaking that up, on the fire department, if Chief Keller was here, that's gonna be asking about, I know they've been wanting that, to replace that standard pickup truck. And we're gonna be talking about, you know, reserve, reserve accounts, uh, and we pretty much drained the fire department vehicle and the equipment reserve account.
Yeah.
Uh, and in order to buy new vehicles or new equipment, um, we'll, we'll be needing to. Start putting some money in that reserve account sooner rather than later, um, so. I just, I just wanted to make sure, I'm sure he wants an order and a wire on that, because they've been mentioning quite a bit about wanting to replace that, that brush truck, I guess.
We'll get the chief to start, start searching out vehicles for them.
Um, that meeting is the fourteenth at one o'clock, and it's virtual. I know I have another training that I'm attending at one, I'm one at New View and then another one at one, but it's, um, the agenda is starting up statewide dispatch association like New Hampshire. Don't know what that means, I don't know if you guys have heard that part of it, but. So that is the fourteenth at one, if anybody wanted to attend that. Are you guys going to statewide dispatch meeting or does it feel like that to you?
I haven't seen it yet.
It's the fourteenth, I got it here.
Was that the one that they sent out today? I saw an email from, from the fire, the fire...
Was that Thursday?
Probably the same one.
I think they probably do that.
And it's virtual, team's meeting.
I'll hear you.
I'll get that forwarded to you, Greg.
Not wanting to recup, we, we took a pass with, without you. Didn't take, the good news, we didn't take any money away from any line item. So, but, uh, did, uh, uh, wanted to give you a chance to, is there anything that you wanted to...
Yeah, we had, well, I'd say there's a couple of things there that we've run some explanation by, and there's actually a couple of other things that have come down the pipe since that was done that we're gonna have to address in one way or another, so...
Just when I thought we were gonna be, uh, whipped right through there.
Well, you know how it is.
The opportunity to talk.
Big one.
It's fearful.
You know how it is. Yeah, we were going, we were going by your agenda.
I was like, oh, okay.
And I said, uh, I think Billy's just finished, I go, okay, I'm fine. Not a problem, not a problem. Okay, um, a couple of things that we throw in here that I'm sure you've noticed and will probably require a little explanation. One of the things we're looking at considering, or having the talent consider, uh, is to extend our compensation for training. And the reason being a couple-fold, it's a recruitment and retention thing. We have probably more probationary members, although we just lost one, she's moving to New Hampshire for the time being. But, uh, we have more probationary members at this time than we've had in quite some time in my memory uptake. Which is great because they're young and they're aggressive. Hopefully, some of them, their family situation indicates they may be sticking around for a while and not fly by nighters, which is always nice. Hard to judge because you invest in a firefighter. You invest time, you invest effort, you invest money, you invest equipment. And it's nice when you get some return for your investment, even if it's not here. Something like, I'm telling you, move into town, it's already trained, ready to go, that's great. We have, we're in the process actually of, uh, adopting a new category of membership, which we're calling an associate membership. People that have a tie with the town and the fire service. We have some members that are career firefighters out of state that have a pro board certification. They're certified interior firefighters and have for one reason or another, either employment or living situation, have a tie with the town. And if they happen to be available, it's a body. It's a trained body and a truck. And a trained body and a truck is something that's, that any, you know, any way, shape, or manner we can get them.
As long as they're certified, they can...
Exactly.
Insurance tech.
They're already metered, so they're...
Right, they're already a member.
Training theater.
So they're, they are covered as any other member. They're trained, they provide their training records, update their training records. So there's ways to think outside of the box to try to, to, uh, deal with the manpower situation. It's not unique to us, it's, everybody's in the same boat here. So this is something that we were, we were thinking. Chief Rockter and, uh, my captain, Wayne Charlton, went to a seminar, put on by National Volunteer Fire Council. And one of the things that they were, the, the tracks in the seminar was recruitment, recruitment and retention. This is, they say it's a nationwide problem, and what suggestion that they had is take care of your members. And every other department in town, water, wastewater, D P W, P D, they're all compensated for training. So that's something we wanted to, to throw out, is that that's a possibility to try to, to keep some people. Another thing we're adopting in this budget is annual physicals, which is something we should have been doing thirty years ago. We have, right now, we have two classifications of firefighter. We have an interior firefighter who is firefighter one or minimum, we have a minimum of two modules out of firefighter one that we require. And a sign off from our training, people who are state, uh, assistant chief, ton few seals, a state instructor. So it's gotta be certified to his standards as a state instructor, as a bare minimum. We recommend firefighter one, but firefighter one, when I first took it, was a forty-eight hour course. And what is it, two hundred and something?
You might as well call it two twenty.
Yeah, two hundred and twenty hours. Starts in September and it ends like the next March. Big commitment for people.
It's like a bowling league.
The problem is, the, the, uh, fire academy and the programs, which are great, but they are designed by and for the career fire service. They offer plenty of programs during the day. They offer plenty of programs for A B C shift, but they don't offer a lot for the poor guy who's gonna work during the day. So something else we gotta work around. But, uh, say we should have been doing physicals a long time ago. There's an outside company that comes in, they do those. We certify to a interior level and a support level, which are different physical requirements. But we wanna make sure especially our interior people are up to the job. And Polkney does, been doing this for a while, while New York City, it's been mandatory. It's actually, I mean, the problem is there are a lot of things that are mandatory, but they don't bite you unless somebody gets hurt. Then somebody knocks on the door and starts asking questions. There's no forward incentive to do it other than, why didn't you do this? Why didn't you do that? Why wasn't this standard followed? Why would, well...
Mitigating your liabilities.
There you go.
But it's not mandatory now.
Yeah, well, it's mandatory, it's mandatory under N F P A. And N F P A is a national standard that only comes into play when somebody gets hurt.
I mean, I'm not disagreeing with the idea.
That's, that's, that's the problem is there isn't, uh, you know, New York is a little bit more forward as far as saying, okay, this you gotta do every year. Bang, 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 and have a program to do it. Vermont is not an OSHA state, it has a state OSHA and therefore it's a little bit different. But the standard you're held to is nationally, is still the same. The lawyer will still know that, so that's that. Under than that going down, uh, not a heck of a lot that we've changed. We are looking to add a couple of data lines for, um, tablets in the fire trucks. So our mapping software and also we have truck check software, so that can all be done on an iPad. iPad stays in the truck. You've got a Wi-Fi hotspot that you can use to, for communication purposes. Uh, so we're looking to do that. Captain Charlton's been working on some pricing on that. So we've, we've kicked, kicked some money in there to, to cover some of that cost. Dispatching, we're still in a five-year agreement. It goes up, what, two hundred bucks or so a year? Of course, the year is split because they do it on a calendar year, so it's half, the increase is only for half of the, it's covered in each fiscal year. But that hasn't changed, that five-year agreement is still good. Okay, also your communication, I got two radio installs that are anticipating next year when we get a new piece. We can just transfer the radios in, but we have to pad around that to, to install them. Other than that, there's a big jump on air pack thing. It's because we do have six bottles that will expire under this fiscal year and would need replacement. Again, that's contingent on us. At some point hooking a grant to replace that with, with a new system. We've filed, I think we've been rejected the last three times under, on the A F G grant. There's another cycle that opens up in a couple of weeks, we're gonna hammer that again. We've also found a couple other sources for grant funding that we've started applying to. Firehouse Subs has a grant program. We missed the last round, but another round starts in January. And what was the nation, or...
National Volunteer Fire Council.
What was the insurance one? Was it State Farm?
Yeah, State Farm backing.
State Farm Insurance has a five hundred thousand dollar grant program that we had an application in on. The thing opened up at ten in the morning and at, by two o'clock in the afternoon, they'd shut it down because they had too many applications. But what they, they had so many applications, they doubled it. And they made it a million dollars and they awarded a million dollars. We got a turn down on that, but again, that's coming around again. So we are, we have put on in the last year, we put on Bee Laramie as an administrative assistant. And her first project was completely going through our constitutional bylaws, our standard operating guidelines, our application, uh, packet, applicable, um, town policies are all in a binder and they're all also on the cloud. So they're easily amended, they're easily changed, they're easily updated, and every member has a hard copy. That was her first project. We've got her working on grants for us now. She has the time that we don't, we have the knowledge and between the two of us, we're trying to get something done. Get some more, get another revenue stream in here. Okay.
She volunteering this time?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, she's got a marketing background at the hospital and she also is a former director of fire and rescue, so she has an emergency services background. So it's a natural for her, plus she loves us.
We've been up every week for the last fifty-two weeks to put that S O G together.
Joe's got a copy of it, he was in the loop on that too.
For her, thank you.
Yeah, so that's a, that's been a real godsend for us. So that's pretty much the highlights of what we've got. A couple of things that have come up since then and it's stuff that we could consider in this budget or splitting or, again, I don't know what we're gonna end up with this year with the operating budget on the, on the repair and maintenance of the apparatus. Because we did, uh, save us a good chunk of change early on. We did, went through both pumps and everything that needed to be done, done. So it was like eight thousand dollars worth of pump work. But everything is operating the way it's supposed to now. I mean, our, our E R is now thirteen years old. So, you know, that was the first major work we've done on that since we got it, so. We've got, you know, a lot of little things. We did, um, upgrade our primer on it to, to one that's, that has a fluid, so it's lubricable, is that set up? And, you know, had some valves to build and, um, stuff along the line of. We've got a, do have a little transmission hic there that Avalanche has been working with us on. It's probably a programming issue, but we're tracing that down the road. One thing we do need to consider at some point, either this year, this budget or next budget, is replacing tires. Because as I said, they're thirteen years old, so you're just based on age, and that's about a four thousand dollar item. So whether we split that between two budgets to pay for it or, or how we wanna consider that, because I'd say that was a came in, figure came in after I made the budget up. But that's something we need to consider. And another thing that we may wanna split between two budgets too, because it covers two years. We did, for the first time we've, that we've ever done it, a couple of weeks ago. Uh, Polkney Fire booked the burn building at the Fire Academy in Pittsburgh for a live fire training. And they invited us up. They paid for the burn building. We bought breakfast, they bought lunch. And we had, what, ten or twelve that, that made the trip up. We had some interior people and some support people. And they got a full day and they did like six or seven evolutions and using our equipment, Polkney's equipment. And they got a really good day, it was a very worthwhile day, especially for the new people that had, had a lot of active firefighting experience. So we wanna make that an annual thing. Uh, only fair that we split the cost. So we were looking at alternating each year or whatever on the burn building, and that's about a four thousand dollar day to pay for the state instructors and everybody that's gotta be there.
With live fire.
But it's the only opportunity you get for live fire because doing it with donated buildings is pretty much a thing of the past. It's, the liability issues are through the roof, the regulations make it damn near impossible. And despite your best efforts, it's really not a completely controlled environment, whereas the burn building is. And you have professionals there to handle every aspect of it. Again, designed by and for career people, but if we can get some good, get use out of it, I mean, we pay for it too.
That's honestly the training.
That would, right, that would be a bump there that we could, you know, we could bump a two thousand dollars and add that for the, each year and have two years to cover that. And then we just split it with them. You know, that would be in, uh...
Do's and meetings are educational or...
Yeah, I'd say, well, all of our, like, all of our registration course costs would be at a, at a do's and meeting, so you could stick it in there. And, uh, I think that's pretty much, uh, sums up where we're at.
That would be, that would be two thousand there?
Yeah, if you did, two thousand each budget year, you'd be able to, you know, you'd go over one year and under the next, but it would be a wash.
So, so is he, are we asking to take the three thousand, six hundred, move it up to five thousand, six hundred, add two thousand to it? I'm looking at, I'm trying to get the right line item.
That's, that may, that may have something, that may have something.
Do's and meetings for the train, the train.
Yeah.
That may have something to do with it, gets us closer to that actual...
Well, I mean, it doesn't get as, you know how you split the cost with, with Polkney? It's as halfway, I know you said it was four thousand.
Right, but if you do it every other year, you know, you say you want to go over this year, over the next, it would be a wash.
It would, it would come out there.
Right, I mean, it's, you know, that, that's the problem with stuff that, that's multi-year is, is it doesn't, it doesn't come out clean, but if you're around long enough, it comes out.
Let's, let's put five thousand, six twenty-five instead of three thousand.
Yep.
Okay.
And that's the right line, dude, that's under do's and meetings.
Yeah, that's, that's where we cover all of our registration costs or, you know, right, right. So that would be the same as, you know, the registration cost for a seminar or a regional school or...
And the other, the other question, tires.
Yeah, and again, I don't know how everything else is gonna shake out maintenance-wise. I know this year, you know, we burned a lot of money up front because that frontline, or that, that Bulldog bill came in. They did that like July, August, so that was early in this year. I don't know where we're gonna come up with, but, you know, if we have anything left over, we can kick that towards it and then, you know, see where we're at next year. Again, on, uh, on maintenance, what could we, what could we do in this year?
We're gonna try to see if we can make it there, are we still? Before you got here, I mentioned that in buying, in getting that new fire truck, we took our reserves down to nothing.
Right.
We gotta, we gotta start putting some money because you gotta replace equipment.
Well, we've also got to, at some point, yeah, at some point, it's, uh... The other half of that project is replacing that brush truck with, with something that's got a crew cab to carry the people that we're losing the people space for and equipment space to cover the equipment space that we're losing. So that was another part of the project and you can speak to that. Yeah, go ahead.
So kinda whether it's tonight, you ought to put it off to another time, or just at least it's on your radar. Did a little pre-work on what it would be to, I guess somewhat to, so you guys can have discussions, give us some direction on what we need to be looking at. More likely not, it's gonna be a one-ton chassis, gonna be four doors, gas, we don't need a diesel. Biggest key to that, automatic transmission. Uh, we have C D L drivers that don't, can't drive standard. That's a common place you find very much so.
That's all.
It is what it is.
They can't drive.
And that's usually how we break people in with that truck, just to make that balance. I went down to, I was coming back up through, so I stopped at, well, I don't know if it's Ross Chevy's, wherever. Dwight Hall Chevy dealer, because I know we've got the town truck from there, Polkney got one not recently. Just gotta give a buffer.
That one, the week I was like, I'd say like eighty thousand.
That was there, so the base truck, what number, kind of playing the source well slash, you know, governmental pricing or whatever. You're looking around if you go with a brand-new truck, not counting body, extra, you know, pumps, anything like that as far as like wireless. Because this truck is gonna be more, a little bit, it's still very much a brush truck, but it's heavily a utility slash brush truck. I think its primary job is gonna be utility, being bringing your interior firefighters and stuff like that and having equipment on it. That was around like anywhere from, let me say fifty-three to fifty-eight thousand, whether you went with a duly rear end or you went with a pickup chassis, which the pickup chassis obviously has a body already in the back, you can do sliding. I would think, me personally, again, we'd have to talk it all over, I would lean more towards a duly... I would lean more towards a duly because we already have a duly, it's safer. If you have a heavier weight, less experienced drivers, we have a very aggressive driving program. But again, if you go from your little Honda and drive this big truck, you know, get pushed in a corner, a little excited, let's not have a problem. The other option, which I don't know if, you know, everybody likes a, a brand-new truck, but we put that goal in working with you guys, try to keep the costs down towards the new truck. You were kind enough to work with us and the town people or. Do we look at a good used route? Because there is some trucks out there that would fit our, our goals with the utility body, four-door cab. This guy's aged to a point, sometimes it bothers because our truck currently isn't what ninety-five, isn't it? You know, it doesn't get a lot of mileage. If it's done right and taken care of, I'm going to throw a number with a body and maybe a pump or, you know, they make them slide in now if they'll replace ours or we can maybe build it. We can figure those details out. Thirty-five to fifty will buy you a pretty, I looked at one at like twenty to thirty thousand miles on it. You know, some more affluent fire companies, sometimes you see them, I was going to say in Jersey, New York, stuff like that. There's some very perpetual turnover and they're very kind and their price especially support departments like ours where we can maybe look at that. I guess it's just to bring the conversation to you guys to let us know when we, you know, we don't want to wait till the day the new truck's back and then be like, oh, we got to do something. Well, it's not fair to you and it's not fair to us. We'd like to start the process and get a feeling or talk discussion on that.
When are you thinking about that?
What we got? So we ordered, the new truck was five hundred days, right?
Yeah, new truck should be here, I would say ballpark roughly this time next year.
This time next year.
So do we work towards, you know, over the winter, putting some stuff together and ideas and next summer maybe work towards that goal when people are updating and stuff? We talked about your budgets and stuff, I don't know.
Talking about reserve accounts and that's where we're.
You know, they should be bumping up a little bit on that or, you know.
Two years would be max.
Right.
Yeah.
And I would say, we, you know, the auditor mentioned there might be some opportunity in reserve accounts to ask the voters to take some reserve account monies that we have or put it to something. So my, my preference would be sooner rather than later that you put your plan together. We get an idea of what that, whether, what that amount is so that, I would love to see something on March's ballot if we, if we reallocated some reserve money that for example would say fifty thousand, not, you know, fifty thousand dollars to replace the truck. Because even if they got, that got built in, the timing wouldn't be too far off from when the new truck, you needed that. I'm worried the new truck's going to come in and we're still, if that's a solution, you got to wait for another vote and.
It's a question of, if it's a ninety-five, it's still.
And there's value honestly in that ninety-five and the ETA. That's going to come back hopefully. I don't know if it'll cover it all, but it'll put a good ticket out of it.
It's a chunk, you know, a chunk counts.
There's been a lot of interest in that. Again, when you put it out to bid or whatever you guys do, we'll see. But I mean, when you go to vibrate a pickup truck and I know it's not uncommon to walk through some lots and they're eighty grand piece, the ninety-five with a standard and no emissions looks pretty good to somebody, you know, for just a, you know, a collector's thing.
The other thing I would do is look over your left shoulder and talk to Almont Dave Slim over here.
Who?
He's a wheeler and a dealer when it comes to them. It's out kind of out of his ability, but.
We should do our homework too. We started it, but we don't, you know, it's like, I've been in sales. You get in, especially the car guys, like you put a little interest in there, you're going to buy it tomorrow? Well, no, we're not there. And that's, you know, it's that ballot, I try to be upfront with them like, hey, we're just trying to get our projected ideas together, where we're coming from. So we can bring you educated information to tell us where we should be going. So you're not blindsided and we're not blindsided, everybody works together. When would that have to be posted to go on the ballot if we did something?
In the, in the middle of.
January.
January and would the board back us?
We've got, we've got a lot of homework to do too, which is.
There, but if, but if we had an idea, we'd know.
We can talk about it if it doesn't happen, I understand. I just, I don't want to have to go out if I don't have to and do the signature thing on top of putting that all together with everything else I got, we got going, if that's fair. We put a lot of effort, you know, we've added five people. Doesn't sound like a lot, but we went to Whitehall the other day on Sunday afternoon, perfect day, with ten people. We walked in and we took, we didn't take a hill, we took a forest fire on a mountain like that. We were back working with North Grand, we had a separate division of the fire. I stayed at the bottom, we set two officers up the hill, one had the others. We had guys that could run up and down the hill. I mean, we got one guy that runs like eight miles for fun, you know, I don't, but you know.
That's what we need.
But that's what we're giving by putting the time into Apple Fest and putting the time into all these other events that stride the environment. If I get one, I'll get another because he's got a friend or she's got a friend or that one's got a friend. Next, the next goal, get these guys up to seeing is get our junior program kind of back. We got to hook one junior from high school and then we'll bring three others. And that's the best thing we can have.
We just put on a probie a couple of months ago, who was basically a lost soul. And he's found a home. And his mother couldn't be more pleased. Because he's found the home, he's excited, he's interested, he's here, he's young, he's in halfway decent physical shape. And we've got an officer corps that's got, you know, what, a hundred and fifty years of self-firefighting experience. So our goal is to teach the old, the young guy to firefight with the old firefighter and bring everybody home. And that's what we exist for.
So, so what you're kind of giving us a feel, I understand correctly. Get some documents, some ideas, get some real more hard numbers and come back and we'll have a discussion when we kind of get things going, we'll shoot for December.
Between now and the end of the budget season.
We've got some turnkey used pieces out of like Pennsylvania. They run about, what, about a hundred grand, stuff.
Right.
Body.
I mean, nine, drives new.
Secondhand, 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 but I mean, right, the body style we need, the skip package we need, the chassis we need, ready to go. So that's just to give you an idea of what you, what you could do on a use, on a use market with, with the type of, the type of a utility slash brush that we're looking at.
As, I will say, needs one.
Exactly. No, it's a balance with all that.
Well, that's right.
The reality is look at how long this truck has lasted. It's not the normal replacement cycles should say a large engine or, or a bigger apparatus because it doesn't need to be, you know? It goes up, we keep them clean, there's hard, I don't think there's any rust on that ninety-five. But it's more, okay, where are we going, what are we doing in its time? You know, you have to, we done pretty well with that thing. And that was a donation from my now host company to Towne and Perry.
Right, right. The corporation bought the brush truck because it was a donation. But the, the thing is, we, you know, we know.
We can donate another one, don't be, don't be.
We had the income.
You're working bingo this week.
That's right.
All I think we did cover was the tires. We got off topic a little bit, he was bringing up the tires. So I don't know what your thoughts are on that or if you worked towards.
Well, I think I go, I'm showing like, I think, what, I got seven thousand in there this year or under repair and maintenance. Yeah, seven thousand, which is what, same as we had.
Well, it could come from there, but it would be tight.
Yeah, because it's kind of cautious, to do a, we used to have Bulldog come up and go through everything, but lately, we've been having Avalanche do the chassis work. And Bulldog comes up and does the pump work.
Good first of all.
So, you know, the routine, you know, oil filter changes and, and, you know, the routine maintenance on the engine, Danny can do out there with, well, you know, he's a good reliable truck guy. Because I know with Bulldog, it was like thirty-five hundred bucks a rate to come up, you know, with the mobile service was. You can run it out there and run it out there to the engine, he can do it for, you know, so we save a little bit of money there. We didn't, didn't have any major issues up until the last time Bulldog comes, they come and talk once a year, go through the pumps. And Kenny found a, a punch list of stuff that needed to be done and said, okay, schedule it, do it and get it done. We got it all done, so everything's up to snuff. And he left, everything was the way it was, the day was delivered. And that's how we want to keep it.
So you're talking about seven grand for tires for that truck?
No, like four grand.
Four grand.
So there's seven thousand that I've got in the repair budget, which was, which was, I think was put in before we got the quote on the tires.
So that, that, that just leaves us tight. That leaves over three thousand for repair. If we did it that way, whatever, at least we know.
What did you put in? We added two thousand for the other one? What did we give you, two thousand dollars?
My, my thinking.
Bring that seven thousand to mind.
Right, it might be doable and.
And then depending on where we sugar at at the end of this year's budget, we may be able to have enough, find enough somewhere to cover the difference and, and do it in July or something like that.
So under forty-five eighty, there's sixty-eight oil repairs and maintenance and turn that seven thousand into nine thousand? Is that sound reasonable guys?
Yep.
And then we work from our end.
See, before, before we ask you any more questions, it costs us more money. Anything else that we, we need to know? If you think of anything and, and if you can come up with, with something for the brush truck, I mean, I would love to see us maybe put some money, my, my dream would put some money in, in the reserve and maybe we find some money and, and then, or maybe we push it to another, to the next year.
Wayne's, Wayne's really good at finding things that, and sending it to me on, on, you know, stuff that's available so we can just keep in the loop as far as what we're looking at and what we're looking at for buying and going from there. And then we can play that game as far as which way, which route would be the most cost-effective to go.
Thanks.
Thanks for coming in.
Yeah, sorry, so since Don is here, if he is ready, would it be okay to do Constables project? I know that you're making that up for a gene, I don't have my schedule and Don, he's already said.
Yeah, I don't have it on my, I do have it on my.
Let me get my spec map out here.
Yeah, it's right there in the middle.
See, now you're going to give us Christmas Eve off, I guess.
Wow, generous this year.
Well, he put his spectacles on and say, emergency management didn't change, that was what they thought and stuff.
And, and thank you for volunteering. Let us appoint you with that.
So.
Yours is.
I mean, which one is?
This is, this is the proposed line, this is the difference.
And what they've changed.
Oh, and what, from this year to this year? This is the current.
I don't think we really had any changes that I could really see. Played with a few little minor things, but you know, like communications, we were able to update our portables and our mobiles. Big spend, but we're there, it's done. I mean, like I think the last one I got, other than, you know, if the state could do something weird and something new technology comes, I usually easily run ten years on a radio, which is a long time, but it's my personal radio and my personal truck that, you know, works well. The same with Sean. Trying to think. The only thing is, there wasn't speaker mics for the new portables. That's why I left a little money in that where we've taken it down. That way you can, if you want a lapel mic, it can be covered. If we don't, we don't. But then travels, pretty standard machinery and equipment. I know I need to update a couple of minor things in my uniform. Again, I think you got away good last year because I think, I don't think I've billed you again for my time. So then I don't know if Sean put in any time if I look at this or whatever. You know, we are, you know, we've support, I think more than anything, we're here to cover the ground that maybe Chief Humphries and stuff where we can help assist them. Mike him out. Well, we had Monday, we did some veterans parade and stuff like that, those events. There's a lot of things that happen when, and he's short or wherever, give me a column, hey, can you help us with this? We're more than happy to do that. That's what we should be. We're working very closely with them through the computer system, which has been awesome. He facilitated that. Whether we can duplicate and keep the costs and everything down. I think I'm good because I don't think you guys changed anything if I'm reading it correctly. Was, am I missing anything? Actually we're down with tip, Charlie?
No, you actually went down. It's hard to argue with someone cut their budget.
You know, it, it's a reality. I pay taxes in this town, Sean pays taxes in the town. If we have some kind of major problem, we're going to come get it. But I mean, I just liked to update a few minor things. I mean, to get, you know, even like the other day I had my double magazine pouch, doof to age, the plastic fatigue. I went, it fell apart. I'm like, what the heck? You know, I was like, I think it's an age when you've been doing it since nineteen ninety-five, you know? I've had other cycles and stuff. I was like, I'm getting my walker to get my truck and then I can go do whatever I have to do. I'm good if you're good, unless there are any questions from you guys? Okay, good. That was easy, so I don't have to go back later. I like this, you like this, this is all a good thing. Good, good.
We're all out here a decent hour.
All right. Thank you guys.
Thank you. What are you there? Where are we back to? Parking lot? Did you think you jumped out at anybody?
That's a budget.
No, but we're good, parking lot's good.
Oh, yeah. All right, board around table, Rich?
I don't have anything, I don't have anything.
I'll hold you to that.
Got a couple of things. Once again, I've been asked about the light, the flagpole, the Betson's part that's been out and I know I've brought it up before.
Yeah, it's fixed. Yeah, I thought that was fixed.
It's out again.
It's out.
Yeah. I, and I thought, and I can't remember, the same person messaged me saying it's out. So if it did get fixed, it was short-lived, but it's, it's out again. So if we can get that fixed ASAP, that'd be.
That'd be damning.
Awesome. And then I touched on it earlier, my wife and I are bringing back the thirty annual Fair Haven Vermont Holiday Light Tour. You can find us on Facebook to sign up or you can email me at my email, the select board to sign up to that. So all the details will be posted on that and posting it on some of the other Fair Haven pages. So yeah, we've got already like twenty people signed up this year.
That's great.
Yeah, you know, if you keep that stuff that gets, didn't get bigger and bigger.
Last year we had like thirty, I'd like to see a little bit of growth this year, so. And it costs nothing. And we do, we did a raffle last year, we're going to bring it back again this year, we got a couple prizes, a raffle off, so.
I beg to differ that it costs nothing.
For you it does, and for me it doesn't, but it's all part of the fun. Well, that's all I've got.
Just one, and I'm glad Chief's still here. The, I'm still hearing about the speed of some of our traffic and I get a complaint with someone living on First Street that it's not just, you know, the, the regular places that you think of when you think West Street, Main Street, Sky Trail, Fort. This was on First Street where you're going, okay, that, that, and it's, that it seems that we're, we have a few, I think they're probably repeat folks.
That's what I wanted. I think you guys, after you asked me about the speeding on Washington, I noticed, well, we're so good, you guys really hammered that. So I just want to say thank you for hammering Washington and for, that was nice to see.
The problem is, everybody has to drive like maniacs. I don't understand it. Those setting the shot of fire a lot, they're going forty-five before they get to the sunset. You know, it's, it's totally ridiculous, slow down, folks.
Wish we could get the speed on it reduced with everything growing out there, like to see it come down, but we haven't had luck with that.
Touching on that, so I know we have the crosswalk, I Heritage has, is there a better talk to put one down first? You've got like Walgreens and Dunkin' and I've seen truckers go back and forth sometimes or even I cross the street, but I'm not, when I come to the class, I go, I just wait for cars to slow down, I'll punch a Dunkin' in the morning, but.
Would that be you and us or would that be the state?
No, it's us.
That is the state highway there.
Where's the state area we start?
Right by here, it's right out there, it's right there, goes up to forty.
All right. Yeah, I didn't know, getting down potentially look at putting a crosswalk halfway in between halfway in between there.
That's another place where the lights would come in.
Right.
I would recommend, if that was possible, to fund those at some point.
Well, we had a, we had a, all kinds of traffic coming. That was kind of happening. It didn't happen, did it? Instead, we spent $87,000.
Can't go to school down this road, Nicole. We ain't bad at all.
Anyway, I'm not bitter.
Okay.
No, honestly. What else?
Anything else?
Uh, I would request a schedule, and, and just, and it can be between now and March. For some work up here.
Oh, sure.
I'm sick of hearing it.
Oh, yeah.
But I, I mean, I am, and, and there's, we, we need to move on that. And this might be a time when there's a little, you know, I know they're getting everything ready for plowing, but they might, they might be able to sneak a day in or something, if you mass attack and just clear it up a little bit, but if that, you, you guys work it out, just, I don't care when it is.
Sure. So the big, I mean, the holdup now is getting the historical society stuff upstairs. But there, we still, we got the room cleared, but there's still maybe 25, man, maybe not that, 10 boxes, and you got to go through each piece of paper.
Yeah.
And that's, that's in my, and I just, you know, I pick at it when I can.
That's fine. So, that's fine. I mean, I know that it's not, and it's not priority, I know that. You know, it can't be priority with, with the help we got. Okay, and the, why, and then glad you, my interest?
Sure. I'll make a motion to pay the payroll, $36,111.80.
All those in favor?
Aight.
All those opposed?
Make a motion to pay the warrant for $90,509.49.
Second. Second. All those in favor?
Aight. And the checkbook status is $951,433.3. State of the state's doing pretty good.
There's a school payment during the next meeting, about $400.
Executive session, I don't see anything listed. That's a wonderful thing, it is. There is another motion I would like.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Non-defiable. All of them there?
Aight.